Madam President.
Yeah.
We have six, seven council members. Mrs. Hunt is the only one that hasn't logged in.
Very well. If you would repay and if you would make note that Mrs. Hunt will not be attending the meeting tonight. Good evening to all. Welcome to the City of Coatesville's City Council Meeting. We're coming out of our executive session where we were discussing personal real estate and legal matters. Could I ask for someone to press?
Give a moment of silence. Ashay.
I'm sorry, you said something?
Yes, I said, "Ashay." So, so it is.
Okay. Very well. Thank you. Chief, you have our flag or James?
Yes, Madam President.
Hi there.
Good evening.
In the pledge?
Sure, I will start us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're moving along to our approval of minutes.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Questions or comments? All council, please.
Councilman Simpson?
Muted.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Alameen? Councilwoman Alameen?
Oh, so. Yeah, everybody has unmute. All council has unmuted because I think somebody muted.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yeah.
Six oh carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion for approval of our account table?
Don't move.
One second.
Questions, comments?
Yes, I have a couple. On page seven of ninety-eight, the mygov, I thought we were going to a different program.
We will be going to a different program. The whole software application will be moved over.
Okay, I just thought that that was supposed to already happen. Okay, then. Page nineteen of ninety-eight. Chief, this is probably for you. The watch guard, is that an annual fee?
Yes, it is. It covers all of our body cameras and in-core cameras.
Okay. Page twenty-one of ninety-eight, RKLLP Process Billing Consultant Advisory Service. Mr. Logan?
Yeah, that is part of the stamp grant that we're using, RKL, for the consulting services. This includes a complete analysis of the city and its operations.
So that's actually a grant, not a bill, where it's reimbursed to us?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't see the reimbursement. And twenty-nine of ninety-eight, the port and all fees, almost eleven thousand, as they collect the back fees, that portion is returned to us when the individuals pay their overdue bills. Is that correct?
I would prefer that to.
Yeah.
Do you like to answer that?
This is, this is Mr. Troutman. The answer is yes.
Okay.
You are correct.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure because, you know, that's an awful high fee, but I was pretty sure that as the individuals paid their back bills, we were reimbursed that, that fee, and I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate. And that is it for me.
Are there any others? All council, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Six oh carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our additions, deletions, and modifications.
Madam President, I have one addition to action items. Seven point three, Conti property resolution.
Any others? The CTDI, does that, Mr. Logan, do we need to remove that?
Yes, that will be rescheduled for June fourteen.
Okay.
We would delete it. That's a deletion, so I guess seven point four.
That's, that's one of the presentations this evening.
Be deleted.
What presentation? From who?
CTDI.
Oh, okay.
Four point one.
So Carmen, you made the motion.
Can we do both?
Second it.
I'll second.
Can we do both? What's that, Carmen?
Do we have to do a separate for the deletion or?
Probably. Tony?
At this point, I would do two. I would do two because you've already had a motion and a second. I would vote on that and have a, make a motion for deletion of four point one.
Okay. So the motion is for seven point three addition. Okay.
And then the seven point, well, right, he said to him, separate. So Carmen, motion. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Green motion, Councilwoman Alameen second it. Yes, to add seven point three. So you could pull on that and then we'll go to the deletion.
All right, very good. Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yeah.
Six oh carries on seven point three addition. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to remove four point one CTDI.
A second.
Questions, comments? All council, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Six oh carries. Thank you for deletion of four point one.
Onto our presentations.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We'll call the Millview Basin four point one at this point.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Beth Uller here to give you an update on that Millview Basin project, along with Kyle Turner from our office with Cedarville Engineering. If possible, I'm gonna share my screen here and see if you'll have something at least to look at during this brief update. And we'll, we'll try to be as, as, you know, succinct as possible here, but we wanted to make sure that council was sufficiently updated on the funding of this Millview Basin retrofit and outfall stabilization project. Just a, just a really brief background, this has been presented to council on a few different times. This project was proposed in the city's MS4 Total Maximum Daily Load Plan, which requires the city to reduce sediment and nutrient pollution to the West Branch, Brandywine Creek. And there's a, there's a prescribed amount of pollutant reduction that has to occur by December first, 2024. This project will provide, you know, once implemented and constructed, a little over seven tons per year of sediment reduction to, to our waters, and, and it will address about eighty-five percent of the city's pollutant reduction requirements by, you know, the short-term requirements, so the ones by December first, 2024, those requirements. So it, in terms of water quality, it will be a valuable project. The existing condition of the basin and the outfall in Valley Township, it's a partnership between both Valley and Coatesville. So the basin itself, you know, there is some room for maintenance improvements, but there, the project is proposing some water quality benefit as well and with different features that provide added value there. Cedarville completed a feasibility study back in September twenty nineteen and then applied for a Growing Greener Grant on behalf of the city to Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in, in December twenty nineteen. Just heard back in December twenty twenty, so it took a long time for them to make the awards, that, that three hundred thousand dollars was awarded to the city for this project. Now, for the original scope, which was the retrofit of the basin, so repairs and putting in water quality features and, and stabilizing the outfall in Valley Township. There was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just approximately, just under that short, funding shortfall for the original project scope. And that was, that originally is, is, well, it's to be split between Valley and Coatesville. And Kyle's gonna describe how a CDBG grant was submitted that will help to fill this gap and address some additional infrastructure issues.
Thank you, council. As Beth mentioned, we, we applied for a CDBG Community Development Block Grant last week to fill in the funding gap for that. The request was for three hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars. Tony worked with CEG and City Administration to submit the application. This funding not only covers the funding gap, but it also includes some additional work within both the, the City of Coatesville and Valley Township. Specifically, it involves the redesign of a, of a pipe that you can see here in the upper right. The pipe is in, the inlet is in the City of Coatesville, but the pipe crosses the road into Valley Township and outfalls on a private property. So the funding will cover that replacement as well. The funding will also cover some, some work that Valley had to do that was requested by the property owner in Valley Township at the outfall. And then, most notably, the funding will also be to repair some of this severe erosion that is, that is occurring in the southeast corner of the parking lot of the Millview Park. There's currently that are outfalling a, a good bit of water that's, that's causing this erosion. So our hope is to be able to get that funding to repair that as well. So as part of this tonight, we would request that the, the, the council receive and consider a motion for the application. I know that it's already been, been applied for, but as a retroactive public notification that the, the county agreed to, we would request that you, you receive and consider a, a motion to apply for the three hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars. Are there any questions?
Not for mine. No questions?
No.
Well, thank you, Kyle.
Okay, thank you.
And Beth, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Thank you, guys.
Can we go back and add this or no?
I think if you make the motion, you're, you you would be okay.
It's, it's more of a formality. I, I believe that, I believe that this discussion in the, the presentation portion, if it reflected something in the minutes, that would suffice, but the motion was just kind of a, a more of a short fire acknowledgement that, you know, everybody was in agreement for it.
We can do a motion if you want. Can we do it right now, Mr. Verway?
I think I, I would probably be better to do it under regular action item.
Go ahead.
I think, yes, I think you can make a motion and add it as seven point four.
All right, I'll make a motion to add it as seven point four.
One second.
I'm sorry, who's second, please?
Seven point three was the resolution for Conti. Seven point four was removing. Okay. So it's seven point four?
I think so, yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
Carmen, Council, Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Should we take a poll on that addition?
No, we're just gonna do it in.
Oh, on the actual.
Regular action item.
All right, very good.
Do we take a poll on adding it though?
Yes, yes. We need to vote. Get a motion and a second.
Yeah.
We have that.
In regular action or right now?
To add it to the agenda.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we have Carmen and.
Ed.
Yes. Mr. Logan, please, poll council.
All right, Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson? Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Six oh carries for the addition of seven point four, which is receive and consider a motion to apply for community development, CDBG. Thank you.
Okay, on to our discussion items. Councilperson Graves, you wanted to have discussion.
We didn't add it.
Okay. So we have no discussion?
Just meeting minutes?
Yeah, just meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I see those. Okay, on to citizens' hearings. Do we have any? Actually, our citizens' hearings, you have three minutes to speak. And at the end of the three minutes, we just asked that you be considerate of the next person that has a question, comment, concern, or complaint.
I don't have any.
Very well. Thank you. Can I get a motion to close our?
I don't have a motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All council, please.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Six oh carries. Thank you.
Onto our regular action items, seven point one. Receive and consider a motion to approve a resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten of the Council of the City of Coatesville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, recommending that the Pennsylvania General Assembly adopt legislation to permit the use of virtual meeting platforms for public meetings held by municipality.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Logan, could you explain? Explain what seven point one means for the general public, please?
Maybe Tom.
Or Mr. Verway?
Looking at my.
Mr. Logan, if you'd like, I can, I can probably feel that.
Sure, I'm like, I'm waiting through my notes here.
There, a, a number of municipalities, during COVID, legislation permitted municipalities to hold meetings remotely, such as this meeting, where everyone's participating in now. And a number of municipalities have gotten together and are encouraging the legislative, the, the General Assembly to adopt legislation that would allow municipalities to hold these meetings remotely going forward if they chose to do so. They're not required to do so, but they could do so. The belief being that, for the most part, it does offer an opportunity. It eliminates physical barriers to attendance, hopefully encourages attendance and participation. So they wanted to, to have this option available to municipalities to use, and there isn't currently anything that I'm aware of that's pending in the General Assembly. This is just a resolution to encourage that the, the General Assembly make that option available.
I know we get more participation virtually.
Right. Any questions, comments? Poll council, please.
Councilwoman Green? Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green? Are I mute? Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
No.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Five one carries.
Seven point two. Receive and consider a motion to approve a resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven of the Council of the City of Coatesville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, in support of Pennsylvania Senate Bill two five two of twenty twenty-one, providing for methods of publishing legal notices and advertising, including the use of public, publicly accessible internet website of newspapers and publicly accessible internet websites of municipalities. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Mr. Verway, if you would, please.
Yes, Madam President, this resolution is supportive pending, legislation currently pending the General Assembly, actually in the, in the Senate, originated in the Senate, the General Assembly, actually in the Senate, originated in the Senate, to allow for publishing of legal notices, such as meeting notices and those kind of things electronically as opposed to print. That would create a substantial savings for municipalities. I don't know if everyone realizes how much it costs, for example, when you do an ordinance to publish that, but you pay by the line, and it is a substantial expense. This would provide opportunities to take care of the meeting, the legal publication requirements without print media, but using websites of both the newspapers and the internet websites. I'm sure the newspapers will charge a fee of some kind to user websites, but it would assume that it would be substantially less. And the way that language is written in the bill, it would be an either or. You would not necessarily have to do both. So if you have a publicly accessible internet website for your municipality, you'd likely be able to satisfy the publication requirement by using that. There are certain exceptions, but for the most part, it would be a net benefit financially, and that benefit to the municipality if this is passed by the legislature and signed by the governor.
I was gonna say it exactly like that. Thank you.
I think as we're thinking about this, it's important to think about how much the city can advertise and how wide and how far. So using like our city Facebook or, you know, making sure that like if we update it on our website or publish an article online, that it just gets out like far and far and broad. Because I do know that there's like significant amount of people in the community that use print, especially folks over 60. So it's, I mean, I think it should be fine to put online, but just getting like getting it out broad and wide or like we might have to do some marketing a little bit to get it to get it out broad and wide to make up for it not being in print.
Any other comment? Poll council, please.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne North?
Yeah.
Six O Carries, thank you.
7.3, a resolution for the leasing of the Conti property, consider. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Logan, will you explain that?
Yeah, this is a resolution for Conti property. Just give me one minute, I have to pull it up. This is not part of your packet because we just added it today. All right. As I said, this is a resolution authorizing the leasing of Conti property. For a number of years now, we've had vacant property located at 120 Prattstown Road. That property has been used for farming by the Smoker Farms LLC. We have a tentative prospect that will be going on that particular property probably in a year or two from now, but in the interim, the Smoker Farms LLC is requesting to farm that land, which is a substantial acres of corn, and they would like to resume the farming and the harvesting of that property. So this resolution is to, resolution of the City Council, City of Coatesville, pursuant to the ordinance number 1332-2010, authorizing the City of Coatesville to enter a lease with Smoker Farms LLC for the property located at 120 Prattstown Road, West Brandywine Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania, Tartsback Tax Parcel 29-085.5 for agricultural purposes for one-year term with an annual rental payment of $9,500.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Poll council, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne North? Six O Carries, thank you.
7.4, permission for Cedarville to apply for CDBG grant?
I'll make that motion.
Who's second?
I get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any question or comment regarding? Poll council, please.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne North?
Yes.
Six O Carries, thank you.
Okay. Well, that about does it for our regular actions. We need to close.
Would you love to go in?
We just voted on it.
Sorry, someone's going in and out. I didn't hear that.
No.
I second it.
Okay, thank you.
Who made the most? Mr. Fokes, you made the motion?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Poll council, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne North?
Yes.
Six O Carries, thank you.
Very well, we're on to our report. And first up is Mr. Verway.
Madam President, early this evening during our executive session, we discussed attorney-client privilege matters. But for as a general overview of activities since our last meeting, I've engaged in real estate matters on behalf of the city, primarily involving leasing issues. I have advised staff and city manager on zoning issues related to a number of properties within the city. I've also addressed potential litigation regarding properties within the city. Unless there are any general questions regarding those matters, that is my report.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Logan?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this evening, you heard the presentation from Cedarville regarding the Millview Basin project. Thank you again, Kyle and Beth, for that. And hopefully we will be successful. And I see that Scott Parasol, who is the Valley Township Manager, he's on with us this evening. Scott, thank you for your support, and Mike Ellis' support and the team over in Valley. So we appreciate the partnership here. In addition to that, last week, we had a wonderful opportunity that was presented to us by Colleen Terry, who is our grant consultant with Econ Partners. She made introductions to representatives from an organization called Z Fund Inc. And Z Fund Inc. is, they are investors. They have participated in opportunities on type of investments. And we were able to, you know, provide them with an opportunity or a brief snapshot of the city. As I mentioned, Colleen provided the introductions. They stopped here first for a brief meeting and overview of the city. And then shortly after, Sonny Huntzinger, myself, and joined by Sue Springsteen and our councilperson, Mr. Simpson, gave them a brief oversight and tour of the city. Actually, Mr. Simpson was not part of that tour. He ended up meeting them over at Sue Springsteen's location at 190 West to kind of get a tour of that building for the first time. And that's where the tour ended. And Mr. Simpson, I don't know if you want to just kind of share your comments on the building or the meeting with these potential investors?
I don't want to give too much away, but I can tell you one thing. I was amazed at the way they transitioned from the old building to the new building, and they did it in such a way. It's so tastefully done. And my hat's off to Sue Springsteen and Dave Wilson and everything for the job that they've done with that building. It's amazing. And hopefully, I hope everybody gets a chance to go through it. I went through it quickly and didn't get to see everything. I had another commitment, but it's an amazing building.
I also want to give a shout out to one of our own, City of Coatesville, Dave Phillips. He is the contractor, the painter contractor for that particular building. Congratulations, David. You've done a great job in that building. It's amazing. And my hat's off to you as well. Moving on to the community update, I was informed by Westchester University, which is great news, that our grant submission, which I kind of shared with you all a couple of weeks ago, was approved, and students will begin working on our GIS and mapping service for the City of Coatesville. The idea is to create a city mapping overlay, if you will, that highlights the available space here in Coatesville so that we can market it better. Sonny and I have worked on this idea before. Actually, Second Century Alliance has a 3D mapping on their website, but this is going to be, you know, hopefully a step up. We'll be able to show developers what the possibilities are for open space here in Coatesville. And that can take the form of commercial locations as well as residential. So we're very excited that we will be partnering with Westchester University on this. Susan Springsteen, once again, you're in the news. Susan was very instrumental in bringing this to the table along with Julie Dietrich. Julie is the executive director for external relations over at Westchester University. Julie, we appreciate your support, and we look forward to working with you and the students of Westchester University. In addition to a community update, you all have heard, Councilman Simpson was just on a community update last week. I think it was on the 20th, and he shared the news of the Grand Prix that's back in town. And that will be September 17th and 18th. September 17th is the cruise night, and is a Friday evening. And the 18th is the day of the big event. This will be our fifth year, and we're very excited about that moving forward. There will be opportunities for local vendors to rent space. We've done that in the past. Last, I think it was in 2019, we had over 15 vendors. So we're excited to open it up, and there may be some new surprises in locations of where those vendors will be this year. Moving on, the city will reunite with Coontown University. We start our first workshop on June 8. And again, we're very excited. There's a number of entrepreneurs here in the City of Coatesville that we are looking forward to work with, help them expand and grow their business. And again, thank you to Coontown University for allowing us to partner along with SCORE this year in the efforts to raise our local businesses as well as help scale them up. That's about it. All I have for this evening. Chip, I don't know if you wanted to provide any updates on your end, but I'll turn it over to you if you have any comments to make. Okay.
You're muted.
If you're on mute.
I apologize. It's been a while. I just wanted, first thing, is apologize for not getting more word about Patton Parkout ahead of time for you all to attend. What's that?
I said that was by design.
Oh, okay. They did a lot of work that day. They had a nice picnic. They did have the basketball poles replaced by Second Century Alliance and David's Drive. And then Public Works crew was out there to help do some cleanup work along with our police. And I'm sure the chief may want to say something about that as well. Reminder that it is construction season, not just at 382, but as we get notifications from the local utilities and PennDOT that will let the city know through our social media accounts that there may be a delay or a road change for you. The other one I have, just real quick, is to remind about the street sweeping. It has begun. So city residents should make sure to move their cars as appropriate for street sweeping. So those are the three I actually have for you.
If I could just add one. A lot of folks have asked us about our community calendar. We do have a community calendar on our website. That community calendar is designed to publish community events. It is not designed to put personal parties or any type of, you know, family reunion type events on that particular calendar. It's for community events that the community can engage in. Most of the events are free. Most of the notices, you know, again, they're for awareness. So if anyone's out there listening, if you have something that you would like to post, I know that we've been getting a lot of requests for posting vaccination centers, which actually, there is one coming up. I think the second week of June, New Life in Christ will actually host the second one, which will be up on the calendar this week, I hope. And it's an opportunity for folks to come out and get vaccinated. So, you know, put that on your calendar. Again, I think it's June 8, but I'm not certain. So just watch for the calendar, and certainly watch for the Facebook post as well.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
So Jubilee is having their second one on Thursday, but individuals that are looking to get their first vaccination are also welcome to come.
And can you tell us that location is where?
920 East Lincoln Highway.
Same where it was last time, remember? You came?
Not, yeah. It's 920 East Lincoln Highway.
Thank you. And thanks to, I think Penn Medicine was part of that, Councilwoman Alameen.
Correct. Mr. Forward, Penn Medicine. What was the date? Thursday, it's the 27th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Very well. Mr. Trappman?
Good evening, Madam President. Council, the financial update is also brief, that through April, which is a third of the year, we have generally positive results, and we continue to have the, some significant timing issues happening, but they generally are favorable. And unless there are any specific questions, that's really the update.
Very good. Thank you so much, sir. Very good. Thank you so much, sir. Onto citizens' hearings, non-agenda items. Do we have any?
No, I don't see any.
Thank you. How to close?
I'll make a motion close.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Full council, please.
You're muted, Jen.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Alamein?
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender Norris?
Yeah, yes.
Six oh carries, thank you.
Thank you. Little special event, so we are on to council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Good evening. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. James, Mr. Logan kind of ruined my little speech about the 190 West Lincoln Highway. But that's okay. You know, I'll go over it again. That's kind of a last minute thing. I was asked if I wanted to take a quick tour of it and I couldn't get there quick enough. Places, they've done an outstanding job. And I mean, this, they had a potential investor that they were showing, you know, what can be done to take old and mix it with new. And just from what I've seen, it's amazing the job that they've done. I just can't say enough. I mean, it's the first commercial building that we've had in over fifty years and it's, it really looks good. Yeah, I mean, it's amazing on the inside, though. You mean, from, I was in that, the old Geo Carlson building when they were trying to sell it. And I mean, it was disgusting. And then to look at it now, I mean, you just, you shake your head and said, it's not the same building. It can't be the same building. But it's, they've done an amazing job with it. And other than that, we can get out of here pretty early, so I'll keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Thank you. Fokes?
Yeah, how you doing, everybody? Thanks for joining us tonight. Wow. To the residents of the second ward, thank you for, let me do my thing. And to the council, thank you. To let me do my thing. Have a good night. Be blessed.
Councilperson Gray?
Good night, everybody, or good evening, I should say. We, thank you for everybody who has joined the Zoom. It looks like we were able to spread it around pretty well because a ton of folks joined. I see like a lot of new names on here, so thank you guys for, thank you guys for all of that. Mr. Logan, you mentioned the 3D mapping and mapping of open space and marketing, marketing that to developers. I think it's important to know that there's a model for community members to have control over land through nonprofit called Community Land Trust. So this is a shared equity in community home ownership and community assets. And it allows homes to remain permanently affordable because the land trust, the nonprofit land trust owns the land and buys, buys land, like all the land that would be on the 3D map as much as it can and enters into long-term lease with tenants to make them become homeowners. Community land trusts are often used to make housing permanently affordable in communities, but also can be used for commercial and retail property. So it really does balance the interests of residents who live in community and also the public interest of promoting wealth and economic growth in communities. So if anyone has any questions about land trust, please feel free to reach out to, reach out to me and we can start talking about how we can get community members together through land trust to own all of the land on 3D mapping, because that would be ideal. Thank you, guys, and have a great and blessed night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Alamein?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for coming. I too see a lot of new names on here. I hope folks that aren't vaccinated come out Thursday. And if they can't make it Thursday, I hope they can get to New Life to get vaccinated. Even though the county as a whole is dropping in numbers, Coatesville continues to rise. We are up to 1,189 positive cases and we have added an additional death. So Coatesville is not really following the path that Chester County as a whole is following. So, you know, I hope everybody continues to stay safe, wear your mask, get vaccinated if you're not vaccinated, and have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Good evening. I too am encouraged by seeing so many new names on the Zoom. My belief is that the virtual has allowed more people to attend our meetings. However, you know, these last few weeks, there's been so much Facebook meetings about what the city is doing or not doing. And like I said, I'm encouraged that people are on, but I'm not encouraged by the fact that they're not asking the questions or participating in citizens' hearings. Because so much misinformation is disseminated out on Facebook all the time. People, you know, you know, we know when it comes to developing in our community, we've been waiting and hoping and praying and moving and there's so much going on. And I just encourage the participation because in coming to the meetings, you will then begin to find out what is going on for real. You know, don't get caught up in the things that you hear that people are speaking and they're speaking out of, I'm going to say the word ignorance, and when I say ignorance, it's because they're not knowing. You know, I thank people like Sue Springsteen, who posts her stuff and, you know, even makes the comments to clarify what is going on in the city. There's a lot going on, you know, but when it comes to development, the city is not a developer. You know, we're, we're not in charge as far as developing any of these projects. You know, the city has incentives that we're trying to offer. That's what the Keystone, that's what the opportunity zone was about, trying to attract the developers. But we as community, if we can see that word unity in there, have to understand that we have to play our part. I'd like to thank again Arlene Miles and her group for all the cleanups, week after week, that they're doing. I really want to bring her here and us to acknowledge her and on the young people for their sacrifice that they're making cleaning up the city. But I tell you what is so discouraging is when they clean it up, the next day, we see sofas and trash and stuff, you know, just put there to replace it. So we have responsibility as community. I think sometimes people forget that even though we sit up here or even though we're here holding these seats, we live here in the community. And we're just as concerned, if not more so, wanting to make sure that we are making a difference, that we are doing and pushing what our constituency wants. So I'm just encouraged by having the people on, but I would encourage more participation. Ask questions. You know, we may not be addressing everything that you may be interested in, but that's why we have the citizens' hearings for agenda items and non-agenda items to get clarity, to get an understanding. So I thank everyone for tuning in and I'm just encouraged by the amount of people that are on. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to everyone that's attending the meetings. And just to reiterate what Councilwoman Green just said, don't just show up to the meetings, get involved. You may see things from a different light than we do. It'll offer up a whole conversation, a whole discussion, and we can reason together because that's what we're here to do, to hear what you have to say incorporated with what we know to be so and make the best of it. So I want to thank you all for participating and encourage you to continue to participate. The city has a bright future ahead of us and I'm excited about the trajectory personally. I'm excited about where we're going. I want to also acknowledge our police department because they've been really busy. And I just want to encourage, to say thank you, chief. Please communicate our appreciation to the officers and to you, for you. I just want to say for those of you who know the worth of prayer, keep our officers and our administrators in your prayers. Because when things are moving, there's a lot of challenges. And we just want to be able to overcome any challenge that's set before us. So thank you so much for attending. Please come back again and have a blessed evening. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Before, excuse me. Before we make a motion to adjournment, I think that somebody had their hand up. I don't know if they entered. I think they may have entered.
I don't know either, but we've already passed that part of our agenda. Mr. Fokes, you made the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or comments regarding our adjournment? Full council, please.
Mr. Logan, you're muted.
Councilwoman Green, thank you.
Yes.
Councilperson Graves?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alamein?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes, and go Mountaineers.
You're crazy.
Councilwoman Lavender Norris?
Yes.
Six oh carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Logan, everyone have a good night.
That was for you, Kyle.
Yeah.